Alicia. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, February fifth. Seven, it is now seven P. M. Excuse me. February sixth. The council chambers will be open to the public. Will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the state's website at W W U dot Madera dot go. Live backslash live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting by dialing by phone by dialing six, six, nine. Maybe I need to get my eyes checked also. Nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. Enter I D four, five, six, six, oh, five, seven, five, seven, four. Hashtag followed by the pass code number one, two, three, four, five, six. Comments will also be accepted via email at city council public comment at Madera dot go or by regular mail at two, oh, five, West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine, three, six, three, seven. I now I hereby call this meeting to order. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Prote Mejia.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Vegas.
I hear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Joyce Lane of Glory of Zion Ministries?
Mayor Pastor Lane was unable to attend the seven o'clock session. Not sure if someone else would like to provide this evening's invocation.
Councilmember Evans, would you lead us, please?
Yes. By your heads, gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come into this room tonight, Father. Thank you for watching over us and keeping us. Father, we ask that you continue to shield us, be a hedge of protection around us and cover with the blood of your son, Jesus Christ. Protect each and every one of us, Father, as we depart. And we ask that you remove self out of this meeting tonight and allow your words to come through. Father, we thank you and we ask these blessings in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, we will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Are they are there any additions or corrections to the agenda for my colleagues? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the agenda by councilmember Vegas, second by councilmember Evans. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Prote Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas.
Ah, yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comment. Members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the city council regarding matters on the agenda at the time the agenda item is called. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment at this time, Alicia?
Not at this moment.
Anybody on Zoom? Thank you very much. We will move on to item A petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item A one. Esperanza, are you going to be commenting on this one?
I have this item here.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Show my screen.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Marsella.
That's okay.
My notes say Esperanza and I said, okay, Esperanza. I don't recognize Esperanza, but I get it. Thank you very much. And yes, we can see your screen.
Okay, let me swap this real quick. Okay, so the item we're bringing before mayor and council tonight is a modification of master pledge and assignment agreement between California Public Financing Authority and Zion Bank Corporation N A D B A California Bank and Trust relating to downtown Madera Veterans and Family Housing Project, otherwise known as Esperanza Village. So a little bit of history, Esperanza Village provides forty-eight units of affordable housing for veterans and families. On July first, twenty twenty, council granted the following approvals. Consent to enter into an agreement between the city and the San Joaquin Valley United Air Pollution Control District for a public benefits grant in the amount of five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred, excuse me, five hundred thirty-nine, one hundred fifty-one thousand dollars and loan the full amount to the Downtown Madera Housing Associates. And council also consented to subordinate the loan to other major loans on the project. A few supporting details for staff recommendation this evening include Pacific Company was selected as a developer of the project. And as a result of a master pledge and assignment agreement, the city entered into a subordination agreement as a junior lender. The construction loan maturity and conversion to permanent financing expired on January first, twenty twenty-three, and Pacific Company is requesting an amendment to extend this term to April first, twenty twenty-three. As a subordinate lender, the city is required to consent to any amendments to the master pledge. Staff's recommendation tonight is for council to adopt a resolution consenting to the modification agreement extending the term of the master pledge and assignment agreement between the California Financing Authority and Zion Bank Corporation N A D B A California Banking from January first, twenty twenty-three to April first, twenty twenty-three. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions. We also do have a representative from Pacific Companies here with us, Jeff Presto. If council, if mayor or council have any questions for him as well.
Would you like to make any comments on this? The representative from Esperanza.
Besto from Pacific Companies, the developer.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I have no comments, mayor. I just hear for any questions I can answer them as I can.
Okay, okay. Do we have any public comment on this item, Alicia?
Do not, mayor, and no one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Do we have any comments of our close public comment? Do we have any comments from my colleagues? Do we have any questions? Councilmember Gallegos.
Uh, thank you, mayor. The first question is, why are, why is this coming to us now on February eighth when it expired January first? That'd be my first question.
I received an email a little over a week ago from Pacific Companies. It was after the January first expiration date. And at that point, city staff, we started processing this request and looking into it and leading us to tonight's meeting. I don't know, Jeff, if you want to elaborate on that because we, the city did forget the request after the first.
Yeah, I don't have much to add really. You know, I work on the financing side here at Pacific Companies as a finance specialist. And the best answer, I think, is the honest answer is that it really just slipped through the cracks. We were really working with our, our perm lender, California Bank and Trust and making sure we had the extension with them. I don't think we realized that we needed to get the city of Madera at the time. Subsequently, it was brought to our attention and then that's when we reached out to you about it. I think it was just an oversight on our part.
And when did you start reaching out to the bank of trust to extend their deadline?
Um, let's back from the email just one moment, please.
It would have been after the first, correct?
It was after the first. I think we got the extension on the seventh. I'm just trying to find the email from the senior vice president there, Mark Wolf. Yeah, we got it confirmed on the seventh. But we were in discussions with Mark about the upcoming timing and such.
Prior to that. It's a big project that I feel should have had the consideration to have our staff and bank of trust staff, hopefully they feel the same way as we are, that it should have been something that should have come to us way before a January one. Government has process and checks and balance to go through and that needs time. And for me to get this report yesterday, that's not much time and the rest of us here do have other jobs and trying to read three, read through it and ask questions, there wasn't a lot of time for me to do that with staff and our attorney. So this question is for our attorney next. Hilda, what happens if we are not okay with this off the bat and need more time and, and we do not approve this tonight?
Well, as, as the staff report notes, Esperanza Village is a long-term affordable housing project involving, among other financing, over sixteen million dollars in bond financing. And that's where this master agreement comes into play. And when the parties entered into that, that agreement, they also asked the city for assistance through that grant that was provided to the city from the San Joaquin Air Control Board. And so what happened then is the council approved that and the council approved at that time that the city's loan would be considered with a junior lender. So and if anything happens there, the city's loan is subordinate to everything else. And it appears that what happened here, they were dealing with a, with a senior lenders and forgot about the junior lenders, including the city. And now until last week, when they realized that they also had to receive signatures from the city of Madera as a junior lender. As far as what would happen, theoretically, the whole project could, could go bust. The, the bank could, could say, we're not going to extend anything. The bank has already said that they need all the signatures. So it would be on Pacific to work with the bank to determine what they could do and salvage the project. But theoretically, the whole project could be lost to the city.
Okay, thank you, Hilda. So I don't know if this is a question for Jeff or city manager. Why is the extension needed? I know the staff report touched on it. But I know that for, for my aspect of the project, there's undergrounding that hasn't been completed that was promised when this project took off.
Jeff, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And you're just looking for clarification about why the extension is, is needed or why? Could you ask your question one more time? I apologize.
Yes, why is, why is the extension needed? Is it because all the promises and checks and balances that were supposed to be done for the completion of the project is not there? As one example is the undergrounding of the utilities on that facility?
I, I'm not familiar with the undergrounding situation you're referring to. I do know that the project is fully leased and has been for some time. The delay really has come from a result of securing the soft funding. I call it the subordinate funding, particularly the ASIC funds. I call them A H S C funding with California Housing California Department, H C D. And so that process has been very long and drawn out. We've been working on that for months and they have to fund prior to the senior lender, the perm lender, California Bank and Trust funding. So it's really getting the subordinate or soft funds, I call them, in and funded prior to Cal Bank and Trust funding. So that's really what's been the delay over this time. I mean, I've been working on the, the H C D funds for over half a year and trying to get them lined up. And I'm at the finish line now with them to get into their closing department and start the closing for four, one, like we're all targeting. We're actually trying to target March seventeenth to give a little cushion. But every day it seems like we're eating into that cushion by the hour. So it's, it's been a struggle and it's been a process, but the project's been fully leased for some time and it's operational. It's really just getting the final financing in place.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. This, the one comment is, again, receiving this yesterday, not really having the time to vet through it. For me, even reading the report, it does say that there are supposed to be twenty slots for veterans, which we haven't stayed or you haven't stayed true to what we projected to the community. So I've kind of put a rule in thumb with this project not to rush to answer and, and vote on things that I haven't fully vetted through. That's what I'm feeling right now, getting this report yesterday and not having the time to really go through it and get to our staff to answer questions or our attorney. So thank you for that. Thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
Mayor Prote Mejia.
Thank you, mayor. I pretty much had the same questions that councilwoman Gallegos. I didn't feel comfortable with receiving this less twenty-four hours ago, seventy-nine pages, much of which were a lot of legal, a lot of legal documents. I'm very uncomfortable with this.
I don't see any more hands raised. Is there any other council member wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor.
If not, oh, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify, if you could, Mr. Cresto. What's before us is just, you're asking the city to move forward on an agreement that they had subordinating so that they can fund whatever needs to be funded and the construction slash temporary loans can be absorbed by the California Bank and Trust. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, we're just asking to extend the commitment from California Bank and Trust.
Because you need to have this done before they can absorb the whole loan, right? They need to have, according to the, the staff report, it shows that California Bank and Trust cannot convert to permanent financing until all secondary funding sources have funded their loans. Is that correct?
Correct. And they'll basically be funding concurrently at the same closing. So they have to be in a position to fund at escrow together.
So at this time, it seems that we haven't funded the other sources and you're asking up until April first to be made, and that should give you sufficient time to get this done? Is, is that?
Correct, yes. That's the, that's the goal. So we're driving towards.
At the end of the day, I think the way I look at it is, I mean, we've already made an agreement that this has to take place. So the fact that you're asking for an extension, I mean, it's just part of the process. You haven't been able to fund all the sources. But one of my concerns is, how far out do you have before we start, you know, maybe getting into some issues here where this project can be in jeopardy because these other two funding sources have not completed their, their agreement? Is that something you can answer?
Well, I'm, I'm not clear about the question. They have, they will fund concurrently with the perm lender, Cal Bank and Trust. It's Cal Bank and Trust that won't fund without the, those funds in place.
So I'm asking, so you're asking for an extension till April first, but when do we anticipate to have all this happened?
Well, they're going to be funding concurrently, like at the same, at the same escrow period. There'll be one escrow, one funding with the sources all coming in together at the same time. But I need to get, sorry, go ahead.
You, you were, yeah, but I'm sorry. You were, you were stating earlier that you weren't having a hard time doing it with the state portion of it. So that's what I'm trying to get at.
It's a challenge.
Where are you at with that now? How, how soon can we expect that to, to unfold so that we can see these escrows close concurrently?
Um, I'm in daily contact with H C D and the representatives there. And they're aware of the timing and they're aware of the full ramifications of missing that deadline. And they're doing everything on their end to meet that deadline. I'm trading emails with them daily. My last email with H C D was just a few hours ago on the current issue of the day, I would say, to get this across the finish line. But they're still on track for making that. I was, I was holding a three seventeen date, but really the deadline is four, one. So we're targeting three seventeen just to give a little cushion. But as I mentioned, we're kind of eating into that cushion often, unfortunately. It's been a struggle, this deal.
Thank you. This question will go to our legal counsel. Hilda, so I mean, if, if we keep on going this route, I mean, is there, and they're not meeting the, the provisions to the agreement? Can that result in some concern with the, with Cisperanza Village and how the city is involved?
Well, the, the city has in the past been involved in other ways, but presently the city's involvement is with this loan. And that's the sole contribution that the city has with respect to this project. The project is a private development. The project is being funded through the, the various sources, including these taxes and bonds and the California Public Financing Authorities, the one that apparently has to work through the final details through H C D. And from my experience with other entities, this happens often, unfortunately. And with all due respect to the developer, sometimes they do wait until the last minute to address the issues and to come before cities to request, you know, approval of various documents in this case. Even though it is, it is a big project in the city of Madera and it does involve that loan in the big scheme of things, it's a very minor part of this big, big project. I think the other lenders are the ones that are probably have more interest and, and wanting to make sure that all the prior commitments and all the prior financing, in addition to this sixteen million dollars in financing, does not go down in vain.
Yeah, and for us, I mean, I, just like it states there, I mean, we are, we have an agreement that the city as a lender is required to consent to the amendments that they're asking for, right? So I mean, at this point, is that what's happening? We're just asking for an extension and seems like we're just, so we can move this thing forward. But I mean, at this time, I don't know, is this appropriate to address the issues that councilwoman Gallegos had talked about regarding the undergrounding? This is more so for the, for the financing, right? Or what?
This is for the financing and, and she could ask staff to put together a meeting to discuss more of the project itself other than this issue that's here before you. But just for, for clarification, the current subordination agreement is a standalone agreement. It says we, we subordinate to the master agreement. But now this new agreement, the modification agreement extending the term from January to April one provides that in order for all, for it to fund and for the extension to occur, everybody has to agree, including the city. So we, but we haven't previously agreed that we're going to extend. We've just previously agreed to subordinate. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and again, to make this happen, if we don't agree to extend, then we can be in jeopardy as well. So I mean, I don't see why we would want to hold on. That, that's just my, my concern. I get the issue with the concern regarding the project under, undergrounding. And if we can bring that back, I'd certainly like to bring that back as a separate discussion. But if, if this is something that's going to put the Esperanza Village in jeopardy because we do not, then I, I would say that we, we don't hold it and we move forward, give them the opportunity to get this extension and hopefully they do a better job of, of actually getting these, these other lenders of whomever is still needed to fund this deal, whether it be the state or someone else, get on it because that's what we need to do. I hate to say it, but I think our legal counsel said it best, you know? Let's not wait to the last minute.
Thank you very much, councilmember Rodriguez. And I agree, there's no way that we cannot extend this agreement. We ventured into agreement just because it's past the due date of January first. I don't believe that that should jeopardize in any way, shape or form our agreement to have this project go forward. Now, having said that, we can address the other issues separately. But as far as tonight, we should agree to extend this agreement to April, giving them time to, to address whatever issues we have. Councilmember Montes.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So my question is kind of in line with what everybody was asking, but we do, after this financing deal goes through, what is our, our obligation? Are we, as you know, for all intents and purposes, kind of done and out of this project other than the conditions set forth when it was approved? And then the other part of my question is, is there peril in everything falling apart from today to our next council meeting? If we say, hey, we just need a little bit more time because that would be the next time we could bring it forward to, to the council, right? It'd be in one week? So that was a, that was a two-parter. What is our continuing obligation and will everything fall apart in a week? And that was.
I'm going to ask staff because they, 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 they know or should know more about the technical aspects of the project from an affordable housing standpoint. From the financing part, this is it. This is the, the only role that the city has with respect to the subordinate, a subordination agreement for five thirty-nine thousand. However, I do know that in the past, prior to my tenure, there were a number of transactions that were approved by the city of Madera relating to this project. There was land involved, there were issues concerning how it would be constructed, et cetera. And that's what I was referring to earlier when I said perhaps that can be moved to a, a separate meeting. But as far as the financing, this is it, as far as this loan, this subordination extension.
So once the, the, it sounds like it's going to be consolidated, this, this city would not be financially liable for anything?
Then, correct, as far as this piece of it. And I don't know if there were prior commitments, but I, as far as I know, there aren't.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, my question is, and I agree, you know, having gotten this not too long ago. And of course, I'm not going to be the expert, but I'm going to ask questions of the experts so I can better understand it. Is there peril of this falling apart, the whole deal falling apart from today to Wednesday, which would be, what, the fifteenth? February fifteenth? Am I getting my days correct? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Yes, our next council meeting is February fifteenth, councilmember Montes.
So Jeff, is that what you're saying? That if we don't approve this today, everything will fall apart by the, by the fifteenth or before the fifteenth? I mean, the, the deadline is already coming gone.
Uh, no, that's not my understanding, sir, that the, I don't think anything changes on the fifteenth. Um, I do know that Cal Bank and Trust is looking for the signature, but they've already, you know, granted or authorized the extension to April first. H C D is driving towards April first. I mean, everyone from title to, you name it, is all still working daily on this deal to get to a April first closing prior to April first. Cal Bank and Trust is holding the rate. So I guess maybe that would be the big issue, I guess, without.
That would be the drop dead deadline, right? April first, right? So as long as you have our essentially consent or our signature before that, obviously you want it sooner rather than later because we don't, we don't want to wait till the last minute again. But as long as you have it before that, there's really no peril of. Um, but as long as you have it before that, there's really no, uh, peril of everything, the whole project falling apart?
I don't believe so, but I can't speak for Cal Bank and Trust. But, I mean, they are, they've already said that their commitment was good, their extension. Uh, but I don't see anything about this Wednesday versus next Wednesday.
Okay, so they didn't say if you don't get council approval on the 8th, then we're taking it back? Right. There, there's the, the, today was not, uh, a date that anybody set forward, other than, hey, we can try to get it on, uh, the agenda, uh, and have a vote on it as far as, you know, any deadlines or anything. Correct? So if we, if we were not able to meet today, it would have gone on to our next council meeting, correct? This item.
That's probably what the city would have done, uh, Councilmember Montes, that's, that is. I think staff was trying to, uh, accommodate the request for such a major project that the staff understood. The city has been very interested in having, uh, completed for many years. And so, so that is the case. Uh, now that I'm hearing more, I do not think that everything will fall apart between now and next Wednesday. But I don't think there's going to be much of a difference as far as the information, as far as the fact that there, this is a subordination agreement, that that's the only thing you're doing, extending it. And I do note from my prior experience with other cities, when, uh, tax, uh, exempt credits are involved, when HCD and the Public Financing Authority are involved, they are very, very keen on making sure and knowing that the particular city involved is invested in the project and wants the project to go forward. And so that could have a little bit of a sway in trying to get the state to also get their part of it done sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
If I may.
Um, again, I want to, I want to make sure, I, I'll get to you, um, Councilmember Evans in a second. Um, I want to make sure that we understand, we went out and got funding from multiple sources. And for us to pull out, just because we we went past that January 1st deadline, would be a huge mistake. Um, in the future, if we're looking at getting, uh, state or federal funds, they're going to look at this as a black mark on our, on our record. Look, all they're asking for is an extension. We can always go into March and we can do an extension if necessary, because it's not Esperanza's, um, um, doing that has gotten it to this predicament. Um, it is other, uh, financing sources. So we just need to give them a little bit more, more time. And, and I don't agree at all that we should pull our, our signature from this, uh, disagreement, because, because what I was said before, I won't repeat it ad nauseam. Um, Councilmember, um, Evans.
Yes, I'm in agreement with both of you, both you and, uh, Councilmember Jose, uh, Rodriguez. Uh, we must think about not only the fact of us pulling out and us having a black eye and looking poorly. We must also think about the residents that are there and their concern as to, will they have somewhere to live? If we pull out or if we delay, and then the state decides, well, if you're not going to do this, why should we continue with the funding? And they pull out. And then now what are we going to do with all of the people that are there? So when we're thinking, we need to think out of the box and consider feelings of everyone as well as the funding. I understand the funding and the extensions date, but one week is not going to make that big of a difference. If we vote today, which would be, be better, that would at least let the state know that yes, we are in agreement, we are here and our word is good. If we dilly-dally and wait till next week, they may decide, well, if we don't do it this week, then who's to say that we'll do it another week? So I'm in agreement to go head on and vote on it tonight and allow the signature to be given and for us to be able to get the extension. So that's my part.
Um, let me see. Mr. Montes, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, and, uh, I, I just want to make it clear that nobody's saying that we're going to pull anything out or we're not in support of the project. What we're saying is, or what I'm saying is that, um, it's really short notice. I'm, I'm going to be honest, it was very hard for me to get through what I could on that item. And my question would be to my colleagues is, so, oh, you read that agreement, you read everything that's going on with this item, you fully understand it? Uh, because I don't want to put myself in a situation where, you know, we've agreed to, agreed to something that, you know, later on pops up like, oh, I didn't know about that. Because I guarantee none of us knew about this. And I'm not, I'm not trying to downplay or say that our legal counsel or staff is not, uh, doing their job. Because I do agree that they do a really good job. But for me, I would like to understand it if I have some clarifying questions. I'm not saying that this is something I'm going to vote no on, or something that I'm not in favor of this agreement. But it's our responsibility to understand what we're agreeing to. And if you blindly just go and say, yes, I'm going to do this, and then something comes up later on where you have nobody to blame but yourself, that's my concern. And I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of the project. I don't want the project to move forward. But it's just a very short, uh, timeframe for me to, to fully understand what's going on. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. And, um, to your point, it is an extension of the agreement we already have in place. Nothing more, nothing less. And at, in the future day, um, Arnaldo can meet with them and then, um, discuss the issues that are, that have been mentioned before. Um, not seeing, um, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Mejia.
I've been, I've been holding here for a while.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll, I'll just finish up by saying this, because it looks like we're going back and forth. Again, it, it, I don't want to get too technical on the agreement, but the agreement's already there. We already had an agreement. Uh, this is just a modification that allows us to extend that. And it states it there, you know, banks shall have received fully executed originals of this modification agreement, the consent and reformation of the grantor attacher to subordinate lenders. And that's who we are. We are a subordinate lender that has already an agreement and we're required by the agreement to approve such, uh, amendments as required by the agreement. So I don't, I don't see, uh, issues there. I mean, I understand the technical issues regarding the other promises, but I think, uh, as legal counsel said, we can bring those in a separate discussion today. Um, this is just going to be brought back again, and it's going to be voted yes, because we, it, it's almost required for us to do it. So it would be, uh, just, we'd have to just have staff to go back and do it again, so we can come back and vote on it, yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Protem Mejia?
Um, yeah, I was gathering, um, like, from what I gathered from both, um, Mayor Garcia, uh, Councilman, uh, Evans, it's kind of conflicting with what I'm hearing from, um, Hilda, City Attorney. And I just think that I, while I do understand that, um, it may be simple for you. I think that, well, this began before I was on council, and I think that it's, for me, it's in my best interest to also give it a good faith, try and try and understand this and having enough time to ask questions. Um, so I continue to be in support of Councilmember Montes's stance.
Okay. I don't see any more hand raised. I will take a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'm going to approve, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, I'm going to move that we approve item A1 as presented. Second?
Mayor, ma- ma- uh, motion to approve, uh, item A1 by, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilmember Viegas. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mejia?
Abstain.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yes votes, one no vote by Councilmember Montes, and two votes abstaining by Councilmember Gallegos and Mayor Protem Mejia.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move on to item B, closed session. I will now ask our city attorney to make the closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You have B1, Conference with the Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Under Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, and we have three cases, Dispo Madera LLC, Doing Business as Dispo versus City of Madera, GFC Central LLC, Doing Business as East of Eden versus City of Madera, and Phinos of Madera Inc., Doing Business as Phinos of Madera versus City of Madera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crespo, and, um, we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good night.
Take into account the requests from the, uh, city council members. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did it go?
Yes.
There's a...
Yes.
Wrong. I don't know. Hilda?
To be...
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said present physically. That's not, that's not...
Let me to report after you.
Is your mic on?
Hilda, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you bring us back to our regular meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider the items on the agenda for closed session and there is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. It is now 8:25 and I want to thank everyone for their petition, participation at tonight's meeting. Our upcoming meeting dates are Wednesday 25, 2023, and Wednesday March 1st, 2023. Thank you very much and have a good evening.